Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting for the Town of Berlin. It's Monday, December 12th, 2022. Please stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of the work session minutes from November 28th, 2022.
Motion approved.
So a motion by Councilmember Orris.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the work session for November 28th, 2022 passed unanimously with all council members present. Item number one B on our agenda is the approval of the regular session minutes for November 28th, 2022.
Motion approved.
And a motion by Councilmember Nern.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Varell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the regular session minutes for November 28th, 2022 passed unanimously. All right, up next is agenda item number two. And since we're on Chamber of Commerce, I believe we have the Executive Director Ryan Nellens here with us this evening for a request to extend an open alcohol permit time for New Year's Eve. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. So we do have the New Year's Eve celebration coming up, and we would like to extend our alcohol sale hours from what I believe is currently 10 to 12 to 7:30 to 12. Because we have the kids should be wrapping up around 7:00, if I'm not mistaken. And we want to go a half hour after the kids' ball drop and then sell from there on. Because there's going to be a lot of events that are the music and vendors and things of that nature.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Ryan, when does the music start?
That is a question for Ms. Wells. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I think it was, yeah.
Is it tough?
So that would happen to them. There's two bands, two bands.
I thought the initial request was from eight.
Oh, from eight?
I thought, but I could be misunderstood.
Eight works for me.
So you want to go from?
So.
So you want to, you just want to start?
Was it eight or was it seven?
I don't recall. Did we have a receipt of paperwork for that?
Do you have the, doesn't that require? I know you just got back from vacation.
Yes. Yeah, I had spoken to someone about forwarding that to you, and I will check on that. I thought that had gone through. No, that's my mistake for not following up.
I don't think we have yet.
You can make the approval contingent on the receipt of the paperwork.
Well, I apologize for that.
Okay.
So what time are we talking again?
If, if eight is what we talked about, extending the alcohol sales hours from 8 o'clock PM or from 10:00 PM to 12:00 PM, moving them up from 8:00 PM to 12:00 PM.
Okay, we were just going forward a few, not stepping back.
Because the kids start, the kids' ball drop typically starts at 6:00.
Right.
That would allow, at least from what I recall, that allows enough time for the kids to hopefully be out of the area before alcohol consumption begins.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Yes?
It says on the flyer the live music starts at 6:15.
I think that's for the kids too, right? And there's.
So they take a pause for a little bit?
So then, so then there's two hours of no music and drink.
But I understand it was all, the whole idea was to have live music throughout.
Yeah, this, this was in my conversations with the folks that were organizing the event, because we just handled the alcohol aspect of it, was that we wanted to have the drinks available throughout the latter half of the event after the kids, because there would be needs of entertainment throughout that whole period.
So, I mean, we're going to need that paperwork, one.
Of course.
And two, I don't know how this body feels, whether they feel 7:30 is appropriate, whether they feel eight is appropriate. I'll throw them for discussion, along with whether or not to extend it.
Ryan, what's going to happen? What kind of alcohol is going to be for sale?
We are hoping to do canned beer to eliminate the ticket sale issue, which is always fun and requires more hands. And we were looking to include like a mulled wine or hot ciders and things like that.
One spot or two?
Just one.
I make a motion to approve contingent upon receiving the required paperwork.
For eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock. Moving the start time from 10 to eight.
I'll second that. So a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Orris to approve the alcohol extension request from the Berlin Chamber of Commerce, moving the start time from 10:00 PM to 8:00 PM to include beer and hot cider at one location. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that passes unanimously. Just make sure that we get that paperwork sent in to Mary or to Kate, if you don't mind.
And one question, Ryan. Where will the beer sales take place?
We're going to be on Main Street. I'm not sure exactly where the tent will be, but we'll be on Main Street somewhere between the Broad Street Main Street intersection and the Pitt Street Main Street intersection.
Thank you. All right, so you want to stay for agenda item number two?
I mean, I might as well.
So the Berlin Chamber of Commerce has a donation presentation to the Town of Berlin.
Yes. I handed the check to Mr. Orris earlier and.
He handed it to me.
There we go. And I also have the comment of the oversized version, if you guys would be willing to take a picture with it.
You have the oversized version?
Yes.
So it's right here, so we have everybody. I don't need this one.
That one doesn't show up in a picture quite as well.
Just be careful with the cord.
All right.
Very nice. So just tell everybody what this is about, what led to the $5,000 donation.
Okay. Well, it's the, it's been the habit of the Chamber of Commerce to make a donation this amount yearly as thanks to the town, the police, and the public works folks that come out, that work so hard, that work overtime. And we just want to say thank you and hope that this contribution to the general fund can be used to ease the burden of that.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ryan. We got to keep the big check, right?
Only if I can have it.
Thank you. Can you please let everybody know at the chamber that we greatly appreciate the donations?
Of course.
Up next is agenda item number three, which is the presentation of our FY 2022 draft audit. And we have our representatives from BKS here with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Tindall and council members. Thank you for inviting us here this evening. My name is Mike Kleiger. I'm a partner with BTS and Company. And joining me is Leslie Michaelik. She is our audit manager for quite a few years on the Town of Berlin. I'm glad we were able to join the guests tonight. Our purpose today is to present the audit results, mention some of the key highlights, and also try and answer any questions you may have for us at this point. I realize that, I believe you guys just received these statements, what, probably Friday? So unless you spent the weekend reading through that report, which I kind of doubt, you may have some follow-up questions for us after today's meeting. We'll be glad to address and answer anything that comes up, you know, after the presentation. I can get back to you right away on that. I'd like to begin with the balance financial statement, which probably, I don't know if you have a hard copy of that or not, but it's about 60 pages. The first three pages is the audit report. For those of you who've, you know, read our audit reports in the past, you can see it's gotten a little more lengthy than in the past. It was about a page and a half, now it's almost three. And the Government Auditing Standards Board has completely overhauled the report and expanded it to about three pages. And the real intention there is to make it easier to understand the audit process and what's involved in that, as well as explain management's responsibilities for the financial statements and our responsibilities as auditors to perform those, to perform the audit process. Hopefully, it's a little more explanation than in the past, but one of the main things they have done is the opinion paragraph itself was usually buried at the end. And now they've moved it to the very first paragraph, so it's right up front as to what the audit results are. And I'm happy to state that our audit opinion on the town's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2022 is unmodified. And this means that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the town in accordance with the county's accounting principles. This is also sometimes referred to as a clean audit or a clean opinion. And it's the highest level of assurance that we can provide as auditors. The remainder of the audit report, as I mentioned, kind of covers management's responsibilities for the statements as well as our responsibility to gather evidence, perform audit procedures, and determine that the financial statements are prima facie statements and that they're in accordance with GAAP. In addition to that audit report, at the very end of the financial statements, on pages 58, 59, there's a separate report requiring our auditing standards on the town's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. As I mentioned, that report's at the very end. And unlike the audit report, which we just discussed, this report is not an opinion on internal controls or compliance matters, but basically, rather than, it's a report on any findings or deficiencies that we note in internal control or compliance matters. In this case, we're glad to report that we do not identify any material weaknesses in internal controls or compliance as a result of our testing. So that's kind of a highlight of the two reports you're hearing there. The rest of the statements, we helped compile, but they're the town's financial numbers and reports. The only thing I want to cover what our reports are and what they cover. With that, I'll turn it over to Leslie to just go through some of the financial highlights.
Thank you. So as you're aware, the town accounts for its activities in different funds. So I'm going to start with the general fund. The general fund accounts for the services of the town that are funded through property taxes, grant revenues, and some charges for services. And it covers the different departments administration, public safety, public works, parks and recreation, economic development. So for the year ended June 30th, 2022, the general fund had a total revenues of $7,721,000. Had total expenditures of $6,171,000, with revenues over expenditures of $1,550,000. Had a little bit of proceeds coming in from the disposal of some capital assets for a net increase in the general fund balance of $1,555,000. You can see comparison to budget. You had some, a significant or favorable variance in revenues in that you had, were over $783,000 over what you had expected to come in. And also in the expenditures, there was a favorable variance of $950,000 where your expenditure were less than what you had anticipated. The general fund balance is a, it's a key measure of the financial health of the town. The general fund balance at the end of the year was $7,848,000. We divvied that fund balance into different categories based on how spendable the money is. So you'll see the categories there. Non-spendable fund balances, which are really announced that are due from other funds. So that money's not available to spend for current year expenditures of 1.5 million. Restricted revenues, which are restricted by an outside source, another government, something restricted by the state or the county. Restricted fund balance consists of slot money and accumulated impact fees that you've not spent at $960,000. During the year, the town implemented a new general fund balance policy and created some new categories. So you have a committed category where you set aside money for disaster relief and debt service, and that balance was $540,000. Then you also had assigned balances related to insurance, the community center, police forfeitures, and two new categories which you're funding with stabilization and capital reserves, which leaves an unassigned or available fund balance of $2,167,000. If you add up the, all the unrestricted amounts, which is the committed, assigned, and unassigned, that's 5.3 million and represents about 10 and a half months of average operating expenses. So where your sources of revenue stop as of June 30, you would have enough resources to last for 10 and a half months. If we look at just the unassigned, that represents about 4.3 months of average operating expenses. This next graph actually shows your fund balance over a period of six years. So it's actually at the highest level that your fund balance is at the highest level it's been over these past six years. Current balance is, like I said, is $7,848,000. You can see the colors, the different colors represent the different categories.
I don't mean to interrupt, but just so everyone, the graph in the packet has different numbers than this. So this must be updated than what this is.
You may have had graph figures. I saw it on your agenda. These are the final amounts.
Okay, thank you.
So the next slide shows your general fund revenues. So it just shows where your money comes from. Total revenues for the year are $7,721,000. Largest source of revenues is property taxes, which makes up 57% of your total general fund revenues. Other significant sources are intergovernmental or grant revenues, which are 18%, and service charges from your enterprise funds, which was 11% of your total general fund revenues. We compare revenues this year to last year. They decreased slightly, about $21,000 from the prior year. You're pretty consistent for the two years. This next chart shows where your money went for your general fund expenditures. So your total expenditures are just over $6 million. The largest area of expenditures is public safety, which represents 37% of your expenditures. General government or administration is 26%. And public safety, or public works, which makes up 15% of your total expenditures. Compared to last year, expenditures increased about $209,000, or about 3.5%. And it's a combination increase in the general government area, public works, and planning and economic expenditures, with decreases in public safety and capital outlet categories. So that's the general fund. The town has four enterprise or business-type funds, and they're intended to be run similar to a for-profit business. So they're funded by user charges, and the level of user charges is intended to be set at a level to cover all your expenses. So we'll start with the electric fund. The electric fund had operating income of $317,000, compared to operating income of $501,000 last year. Had some interest expense for a net increase in net position of $189,655. Your service charges did decrease by about 300,000 or 4%. And then expenses also decreasing by about $128,000, mostly due to decreases in payroll and related costs. The water fund had an actual, an operating loss of $66,000.
Can we go back to the electric fund for a moment?
Sure.
So I think you can see that your own slide only shows 2022, but if you look at 2020, our net position's trending downward. And for the electric fund? Sorry. For the electric fund? And I want to, I want to ask the question, do we believe that, I think this year we may even close slightly in the red with the electric fund? Is that still anticipation with Natalie?
You're talking about fiscal '23?
Fiscal '23, yes. And that's largely, I want to try and explain this while we have everybody here. We're believing that that is due to the cost change relative to the fact that we're hitting the end of a point with the rate evaluation for electric, which is why we are going to be going back to the Public Service Commission with a request for a rate change. Am I correct?
The estimated projected for the half year, if you go to the half year projections.
Is not favorable for electric.
As of right now, but we still have another six months and we're working on a rate study, yes.
Okay. So it's very possible that if we trend that way, that we could be looking at a loss for '23 when all of the financial statements come through. But we are trying to adjust for that with the rate study coming up.
Correct. Pre-recovering the cost for the electric sales, in electric sales. So the rate study is to recover everything else that is not included. The admin charges and everything else, so yes.
Plus, we've had some changes that just started with the, was it the power, or not the power cost, with the RPS, the Renewal and Portfolio Standards. So hopefully, combined with those things, we'll start to see a little bit of a change for future fiscal years with our electric fund.
So the electric, the electric service fee, this is new area for me. Do they determine what we charge?
So, and Natalie and Tim may be able to provide more information on this than me, but we can't adjust rates the way that we can within water and, within the water fund, so water sewer and stormwater. Any rate change for electric has to have a rate study, which ours is coming up on 10 years. And we're, that was funded in this fiscal year's budget, to have a rate study conducted. And then that requires us to go before the Public Service Commission to be able to make those changes, which is covered. Well, no, this is just our annual presentation.
Annual hearing is to reconcile the prior 12 months average and recoup, which is normally, it's very minimum. It's not even a fraction of a penny. If we recover or we give it back, it depends on the average for 12 months of the rates, monthly rates. But the question you have asked, the rate is a combination, is a cluster of everything included, what cost to, to sell the electric back to the customers, and it calculated monthly.
And the rate study would require us to go back to the Public Service Commission?
So if a rate change is approved, is it locked in for 10 years then? If we can't go back for most 10 years?
Pretty much.
Well, we can go back.
Well, it's not a rate change. It's the recover the cost.
We're talking about two different things though. December is the cost recovery, which is where we're at now. The rate study, it's, it costs a sizable amount. We're talking a couple hundred thousand?
About 20,000.
No, it's.
Or what's that?
It's below that.
It's below that? Okay, well, if there's a sizable contribution that has to do with the data and everything that you have to compile to go before the Public Service Commission? So that costs money, which is why we do that roughly every 10 years or so, or we have historically. But I just think that it's important to note, I mean, you're looking at a net change from 2020, fiscal year 2020 at $1.5 million to fiscal year '22 at just shot at $200,000. And knowing what we know about the financial position of the fund currently, I think it's important to say that we're, we're trending in the wrong direction. So, thank you.
I bet that was really exciting for you.
So the water fund, as I said, had an operating loss, $66,000. It was down from the loss of the prior year. Had some interest income, and then collect on the special connection fees, of $264,000. The special connection fees are restricted to be used only for capital projects and repayment of debt. So the water fund actually had an increase in its net position of just over $200,000 per year. There's a slight increase in service charges, an increase of about 1%, and then a decrease of about 5% in operating expenses. The sewer fund had operating income of $741,000. Operating revenues increased $640,000 due to a 2% increase in service charges. And included in there is a significant increase in the hauler fees. An increase of $601,000 in hauler fees related to new developments, especially Walmart and other developments. Operating expenses decreased $278,000 due to decreases in payroll-related costs, contract services, and depreciation expense. And you collect special connection fees in the sewer fund of $710,000, which are restricted for capital projects and repayment of debt. So the sewer fund actually had an increase in its net position of $1289,000. We'd like to say that's an unusual year for the sewer fund because of the, this large increase in hauler funds and because that's not really expected to continue.
Do you think it's wise to start looking at any transfer back to the general fund to pay back some of that outstanding obligation?
You did include a small amount in your budget to pay it back. I believe it was a plan over a certain number of years to pay it back. But I suppose it is a consideration that you have to look at.
I think we should block that fiscal '23 and see how it goes.
See how the fund closes.
With established new rates in the service fees as well. We will not rely on the hauler fees that a project is finished and lived. And then we will see if we can finish or transfer to close that.
But this year, you think we should hold off just for a little?
The fiscal '23 then.
Okay.
The final enterprise fund is the stormwater fund. It's not really much going on there. Kind of loss of $88,000, almost $89,000 compared to loss of $100,000 in the prior year. It's pretty consistent between the two. The net position, for the general fund, we talk about fund balance. For the enterprise or the business-type funds, we consider net position. The fund balance considers short-term or spendable resources. But the net position in the business-type funds also includes long-term assets and long-term debt and also net pension obligations. The total net position in the enterprise funds in total was $27,508,000. Portion of that that's invested in your capital assets was invested in your property, your plants, your equipment, was $22,357,000. You had $1,373,000, which is restricted, which are the special connection fees and EDUs that you collected that are restricted as to how you can use them. Leaving an unrestricted net position of $3,777,000. That's your unrestricted portion or your spendable portion. You will note that this stormwater fund does have a deficit, and it's unrestricted of $152,000. So we talked about the amount that the sewer fund and the stormwater fund owe the general fund. That's at the bottom of the grant. Like I said, you did, including your budget, to pay back a small amount to the general fund, $20,000 from the stormwater fund and $10,000 from the sewer fund. So the amount of, that's due to the general fund at the end of the year is, is 1.4 million from the sewer fund and $172,000 from the general fund. Working capital, we look at working capital in the enterprise funds, which is the current assets less your current liabilities. And it indicates the liquid or the spendable portion of your enterprise fund capital. The, you can see the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you maintain no less than 45 days of working capital. And you can see for all the funds, you're well above that. Electric fund has 255 days. Water fund has 1,300 days. So that's your cushion that you're maintaining to pay your current obligations. And that, I think it's all had. Anybody have questions?
Oh, more?
I don't have any questions. I think it's more of just a discussion among, among the group here. Thank you for the, this is great. And I think that, I have some, some comments and questions for Natalie, but I don't think that we need to keep them for that. We can talk about that.
I mean, if it pertains to the finances, it might be wise while they have the.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, they're, I mean, they're providing an audit, and this is more, I'm just, for the Stormwater, I'm going to say again that I think that when the upcoming budget season starts full swing, we need to take a, what I would call a step back and look at the whole utility holistically and see what, see what we can, we can do there. I did want, actually while you are here, can you go back, I guess it was about four slides, I just want to clear this up for folks who may be watching or have any questions. It's about the slide that had due to the general fund, and I think we might want to clarify that just a little bit. I understand that this is due to the general fund, due to the fact that general fund has, no pun intended, carried the water for that particular fund, is that correct? So in other words, as of June 30, 2022, Stormwater owed the general fund $172,000 because that's the amount that has been used from the general fund to cover.
Yeah, so the Stormwater Fund wasn't generating enough cash to cover its operating expenses and its capital expenses, so they had to borrow from the general fund. That shows is a due to, due from between the two, the same situation with the sewer fund, but of course, a lot, much larger amounts. In fiscal year 21, that amount was much larger. The council approved a transfer, permanent transfer of half the amount between the general fund and the sewer fund, where since they wrote off that due, due from, which brought it down to, to its current amount.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that, if there are any questions for anybody watching, that that was kind of.
Got a question if you could. The, two slides, the big bar graph, or the big graph that talks about general fund balance. There you go. I'm really just looking for more of, I'm understanding now, because Natalie has tutored me, but the, for our citizens, you know, in your previous audit reports at the council, you encouraged reserve, reserve policy, you know, that balance, according to what I'm looking at, it's 2, that's right here, 2.1, in 2019, it was $15,782. So could you talk a bit about what the unassigned balance is, what, how it got to that number, those sorts of things, just to educate?
Well, the unassigned is really everything that doesn't fit into any of the other categories. So, like I said, restricted would be anything that has some kind of legal restriction on how you can spend it. Committed is, is really an internal restriction, so that's money that is restricted through ordinance or resolution passed by the town.
And that's, that's supposed to be undone too, it's just not, you're not, you're tied to those things based on your votes. Stick your finger, they're not, they're not to the point where you can legally undo those things, so.
For some, for some things.
For some things.
Yeah, so committed would be hard, so assigned is really just a designation, there's no formal resolution or ordinance. So when you assign something, it's very easy to just unassign it, it's just a council decision. Committed's a little harder because you, because you've established it through an ordinance or a resolution. In order to reverse it, you would have to pass another ordinance or resolution, but it's all done internally. Where the restricted, you really can't change that because that restriction is coming from outside the town. So the unassigned really is just anything that, that doesn't fall into any other restricted.
I guess I'm looking at it as, that, the fund, 4.3 months, right? When you say, I believe the audit said is.
Right.
It was 5.5 months last year, but at one point in time, there were, there was.
It was very tight, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all, I just was really, I think that's an important number, I think this council, I had nothing to do with it, this council should be proud of that, you know, I think that was, you know, it shows, it's healthier.
And this council, as they, as they mentioned, established the reserve funds committed, assigned, my apologies, assigned, the transfer of certain funds into different categories. And to Councilmember Ors's point, the non-spendable that you see there, that's that due to, due from, that we want to see ahead in that downward slope that you can see there.
So the definition of each of those things is also noted on pages 29 and 30 in the, in the report, kind of reading explanation for each of those categories.
And to make everybody more familiar with it, Natalie has been adding those definitions to each one of our quarterly reports. They, they follow a similar flow, so most of this should be somewhat repetitive, which is good, they want that.
And if you look at the graph between 2021 and the colors, you see the green is the, is the assigned, so where it was much smaller in 2021, it got larger in 2022 because you added those categories and funded them. And that little red slither is the committed, that you didn't have in the prior year. And both of those, both of those areas were expanded because of the adoption of your policy. Those, those two areas are bigger.
The, just, one more. The, the fees that were added to the utilities, Stormwater, Sewer, and Water, the fees, those will, those will show up in next year's audit, correct? Because they just started. And I just, were those capital or?
They are, yeah. So they'll go into a dedicated capital fund within each one. Was that?
Water and.
For water and sewer.
Correct.
Well, water, sewer, and stormwater, correct?
Stormwater, it's just a rate, it's a fee.
Oh, that's correct.
It's not in, in capital.
That's to hopefully make, which was, let's see, one of the last enterprise funds that you went to, do you mind going back to that slide?
Stormwater.
Stormwater?
Yes, please. So the net change in position, we're trying to fix the fact that it's been closing in the red, or at a loss, where the fees were adopted to change that, to hopefully make the fund break even, because what's happening now is when it closes at a loss, it pulls that money from where?
General fund.
I know the answer. I know the answer, trust me, I know the answer. But yes, it's pulling it from the general fund, which it should not be done, right?
Well, it's heading in the right direction.
And it, it will head even, it will, it will look even better, hopefully, in fiscal year 23's audit, so.
So to offer a summary here for the residents of the town of Berlin, based on what you presented here, and based on the fact that the park seating, the required, the amount of cash required, would it be your opinion that Berlin is on solid financial ground?
Yes, so I think that the books and records of the town are in good order. We didn't have any difficulties in performing our audit, and we got a lot of cooperation from Natalie, and Vondell, and Shirley in the accounting department, and that we feel like the town is in, is in good financial position.
And also mention that there are some additional funds coming from COVID that are going to be implemented, I guess, in the current fiscal year right now. I think it's around $2.5 million, $2.4 million is still left to be used, I guess, in the current year, so that's, that's a benefit as well as a benefit.
Well, yes, the park is mainly going to help with some of the capital.
Right, you're going to use those ones for a specific purpose, but I just want to mention that those are funds that are still available in the current, current fiscal year that you're looking at, so.
And I think to Jay's point, and I think Steve, or Councilmember Green, and Councilmember Nair, I think Councilmember Green touched on the fact that we have, what is it, how many months did you say, roughly?
10.
But once you adjust that out, the true amount is what, roughly?
Using just the unassigned, the fund balance is 4.3.
But the, so the 10 months accounts for the assigned plus the unassigned?
Unassigned, the assigned, and the committed, all the non-restricted ones.
Correct. So with that being said, we get to, we, we have to determine what we believe is a safe amount there, right? So we were trying to achieve a level before that was the standard of the GFOA, which is three months, correct?
That's a, that's a metal.
Right, right. So, but we have to determine what our own risk looks like, what we believe is a, a good financial footing. I think we can make some more headway in that a little bit. Well, yeah, we're doing much better. I like your quote, I think it's the highest, it's been six years, so it's a, it's a good quote.
I'd also like to say, I know this takes a lot of work to put this audit together, so a great job on that, but I also wanted to give a huge shout out to Natalie and her team, for keeping us on track.
Vondell just stepped out, but.
You do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
We appreciate it, thank you so much. I don't know if anybody else has any additional questions?
Just one thing. How did the software work in preparing this information and present it to these folks?
It makes our jobs a lot easier, smoother, we have more transparency, everything is recorded and documented. We still have a lot of paperwork on paper, which probably in the future, a couple of years' projects, but generating the reports and producing the details is what we want you to do. And the integration, when the billing department uses the general ledger, is much quicker way.
Ron, glad to hear that.
Ron D, you just came back in, but we all said thank you for all the work of the finance department, and your work, and Natalie's work, and Ms. Shirley's, yeah, Ms. Shirley's work, and everybody with PKS.
And a little one now.
And our two, tell them that.
Very good.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a, have a Merry Christmas and happy new year. All right, let's see, up next is agenda item number four, which is a public hearing on ordinance 2022-08, which is a text amendment requested by the Burley Oak Brewing Company to section 108-163B of the Town Code. Our planning director was going to run the point on this, but he's not here this evening, so do we have any questions that came in that we wanted to read?
None that came in.
David Gaskell, our town attorney, do you have anything to add to that before we open up a public hearing?
No, I don't.
So we will, David, do you want to do the presentation first, or public hearing first?
There's public hearing.
Correct, and.
Well, they're, they're part of the public.
Right, you're welcome to sit down, you're part of that. All right, we're going to open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-08. Public hearing for 2020, ordinance 2022-08, a text amendment requested by the Burley Oak Brewing Company to section 108-163B of the Town Code.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the record. Mark Spencer Propper, 6200 Coastal Highway, Suite 200, Ocean City, Maryland. And I represent the Burley Oak Brewing Company, who is my client for this matter. This text amendment was submitted by me on its behalf by letter dated September 20th, 2022, and as has been read in the record, it's very simple. It simply reads in B2 Shopping District, or B3 General Business District, a special exception to allow grain silo to be utilized as part of a brewery operation, but not exceeding 35 feet in height. So what's important to note about this text amendment, it's enabling legislation only, which simply means that it enables a property owner, not just Burley Oak, but anybody in these properties in this zoning classification, to make application with your Board of Appeals for a special exception. It's then left up to the Board of Appeals to determine on a site-specific, case-by-case basis whether to allow such a silo as part of a brew operation. The beauty of a special exception, as you know, is it gives the public an opportunity after a public notification to appear and either support the request, oppose the request, express any concerns, and it's then, again, left up to the Board of Appeals which locations may be appropriate for such a silo, which may not. Therefore, in considering this text amendment, while yes, I represent Burley Oak, and should the mayor and council look favorably on this request, Burley Oak will certainly be appearing before the Board of Appeals seeking such a silo. This is not site-specific, and it is not case-specific. With that in mind, I'm going to hand you all.
Handout, would you say we have 10 here?
Yes.
Well, there's none in there, I got one.
This is a handout that was prepared by Mr. Davis, will you identify yourself in the record, please?
Sure, my name is Adam Davis, I'm the chief of operations of Burley Oak Brewing Company. I do all the back house production, beer manufacturing.
And so what Mr. Davis did, for my benefit and yours, was kind of a outline, did you get it? Okay. An outline of why the request is being made, and reasonable concerns about such a request, the advantages and disadvantages, similar to that. First, identify for not only the mayor and council, but those in the audience, what your role with Burley Oak Brewing Company is.
I'm the chief of operations, I oversee all the back house production, scheduling, ordering, inventory of all the beer manufacturing on the property.
And I presume I'm correct that should the mayor and council look favorably upon this request, you will be instructing me to file an application with the Town of Berlin Board of Appeals for such a special exception?
Yes.
If you will, run through this outline indicating first what the need and purpose for the silo is, and then run through your outline.
Sure, so as far as overview, this silo is intended to hold 48,000 pounds of grain. There's a picture of an example on the back of the first page, from a fellow brewer in Columbia, Maryland, Jailbreak Brewing Company. Silo's going to stand approximately 31 and a half feet tall, just under 32 feet, it's about eight and a half feet diameter. In terms of what this is going to help us do, first and foremost, the biggest advantage, we're looking at employee safety. I pulled some stats from U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. Forklift accidents, which will be greatly, hopefully reducing the potential of a lot, comprise 95,000 injuries a year, musculoskeletal injuries, which comprise 30% of dayside work injuries, are also the number one and two kind of causes of warehouse accidents. And that's from a biggest standpoint of what goal we can kind of eliminate with some of this stuff. That being said, what we're currently doing and operating by, will no longer be unloading, moving, breaking down with amounts of about 227 pallets a year, each weighing 2,200 pounds. Currently, we're doing this with pallet jacks, forklifts, bag by bag, by hand, so with a silo, we can reduce this kind of pallet and forklifting and hand-to-hand unloading, you know, by 80 to 90%. With increased pounds per delivery of truckload, we will be reducing the amount of trucks coming through Old Ocean City Boulevard by 15 to 20%. Going back to the roughly 227 pallets a year. The third bullet point, this is roughly 500,000 pounds of grain a year. These are 55-pound bags, 50, 55-pound bags, so we're going to cut out about 9,000, and these are unfortunately unrecyclable plastic bags that we get these in grain sacks. So it will be arguably a greener means of brew house operations. We're talking a half a million bag or pounds of grain a year doing this thing. And then the other benefit to us is buying in bulk will get a decreased cost per pound of grain, and then also less warehousing space that we would need to store this, you know, inside, you know, production floor. You may have more, I listed some kind of concerns that I would assume the town would have, and possible negatives, and hopefully I rationalize them in a way to mitigate kind of what you might be seeing as an intrudence. The silo's not going to be any taller than a typical tree lining the back of the property, obviously it's certainly fatter. In terms of noise, I measured our existing augers inside the building with a decibel meter, and right up against it, I'm getting 90 decibels. Similar auger would be conveying this grain into the building, five feet away, it's about 70 decibels, yes? And that's about the, the volume of a typical household air dryer or blow dryer. So it's, shouldn't be a noise impact. In terms of odor, this is a closed system, if things were getting in, then we're going to have bacteria and staling and stuff like that in the grain, which we don't want anyway, so there should be no other odor perceived on the property, short of what already is being produced on the property in terms of oil and ore, and hopefully those aromatics and dialogue. So that should be. oil and ore and hopefully those aromatics that are...So that should be, in terms of an odor impact, the only thing. There shouldn't be any. The second page again is the picture of an example. Third page is a schematic diagram of what this silo looks like. This is a redacted version of a quote that my manufacturer gave to another company in terms of just having an example. And then the final page, there's basically a letter confirming my, I guess, opinions on the front of the first page about the impacts that this silo would have. He's installed one of these. It was just kind of an industry example and a testimony to kind of hopefully bolster the claims that I'm making.
That's our presentation.
Well, thank you. Very concise. We like it.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to ask questions? You can, but we need to...Do you think we should allow others to speak or...
Well, if anyone else wants to. It doesn't really matter. Take questions now.
Do you want to do your question now, or do you want to talk to others?
Oh, sure. Is there anyone in the...
Well, we'll ask that in the morning.
Well, this, I guess, I don't want to get too into design. I don't know that's our area here, but is this kind of what you're expecting it to look like, or are we looking more like secrets where they have up lighting?
I don't know if that's...I have, from the manufacturer, I can put, not to say that we're approving any of this right now, but they can put a brand on it. They can logo it. They can custom design it. It can be colored. It can be whatever.
No, I mean, I get that, but I'm just...I guess my question is, is there...Is it going to be lit at all?
It does not need to be in terms of the functionality of the silo. And that would be up to the Board of Appeals.
Well, not only...I was going to add, not only the Board of Appeals, should they be interested in granting a special exception, one, they can impose conditions on the approval, which include lighting, but also should the Board of Appeals grant a special exception before the silo could be constructed, it would require a site plan approval. And Planning Commission could address issues like lighting at that time as well.
Or timing.
Or timing, yes.
Yes. All right. That was my only question. I didn't want to...
And this change to...This change to Section 108-163 is not specific to Burley Oak.
Correct.
This is just the applicant that made the request.
That's absolutely correct.
Say that again.
The change here to sec...What we have before us this evening, the change to Section 108-163, conditional uses, variances, and special exceptions, adding number eight, is not specific to Burley Oak.
So tell me, so the group, the...That provides the special exceptions currently...
Board of Appeals.
...does not have the authority to grant this exception currently.
Correct.
Why is that?
Um, defer to Dave.
Because it's not a listed exception in their ordinance.
Because it's not listed.
Yeah.
This would only...This would only be added as one of the possibilities...
That's correct.
...for a special exception.
Exactly correct, yes.
Yeah, we're not voting to approve or disapprove anything from Burley Oak.
And I would also admit that it's specific to a brewery operation.
Correct.
So Burden Pizzeria couldn't decide to put a silo up first, just as an example.
And just for a little history, when Burley Oak had an interest in installing such a silo, they had communications with Dave Engelbart about whether they could do so, and the answer, and I think was correct, was no. The only way they could proceed to pursue a silo was to have the burning code changed to allow the request to be made.
As this, as one of the possibilities?
Yes.
And just to summarize the impact to your operation, it would...Less traffic, not having the responsibility of disposing of those plastic containers.
Or fewer of them. It'll be fewer in this case, right?
Sure. Yeah, it'll be certainly 70 to 80 percent less than what we're currently consuming.
I like the workplace injury. Yeah, safer workplace. I mean, that's very interesting. Now, I do want to open this up. It is so part of the public hearing. You're welcome to stay seated.
Mr. Mayor, let me cut you off. Let me cut you off. I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding the public hearing on Section 108-163? Okay, if none?
I just have a couple more questions.
Done.
A couple of questions. One, you stated in your paperwork here, it takes...It takes about...You can fill it about 10.5 times a year.
Yes.
Is that the only time you run the auger, when you're filling it?
Well, the truck would have an auger that would feed it up into the top of the silo.
Right.
Our auger, which be attached to the base of the silo, the motor for that will be inside the building. So the motor that's actually operating the noise that's between us pulling grain out of the silo and bringing it into the building, that's actually housed inside at the end of where the grain is going to be going, over top our mill. So that will be inside. There will be obviously either a chain and disc or a screw auger that is fed from the motor that is inside the building.
So you're running your internal auger more often, and how long does it take to fill it up on the outside?
In terms of filling it, I don't know that answer. I can't imagine more than an hour or two.
No, so it's not that unbearable.
Right. And it would be during work hours. It wouldn't be at 3:00 in the morning. You know, we're not receiving things during those hours. Our receiving hours are 9:05.
Okay. And my other question is, is there any kind of cleaning cycle that these silos need to go through on occasion?
Yes. Once a year, we would...I'd order a few extra pallets of the same grain that I would be storing in there to bridge the gap between, you know, keep operations going, let the silo finish out, empty it all out, and what's left in there is just kind of some powder. It's called chaff. We would just basically unhook the boot from the bottom of the silo, let it drop out into a trash can, throw it out, and hook the boot back up to the bottom of the silo. So it wouldn't be like clouds of things going everywhere.
And it's not harmful?
No.
That was my other question.
So this special exception, again, is or wouldn't be made available to all breweries where it's...if that's what it's for. And right now, the only brew house in town happens currently operating is Burley, and Forgotten 50 should be somewhere in the near future or they're about...
It's my understanding that's going to be a distillery.
The distillery, but I mean, whatever, same difference. But I mean, they're doing the same thing. They're doing the same thing. They're creating something there, right? Where they're having to use large tanks or whatever you want to call them, silos, to store and house. And this possibly could work, could be something that they could appeal or apply for as well. Is that...Am I understanding that correctly?
Is the language...
If it's a distillery and brewery.
I don't know if the language...
Probably that difference. I don't know. I don't know.
This is specific to a brew operation, and under your code, I have to defer to Mr. Gaskell, whether both would be considered the same. I don't know that answer.
I would be of the opinion that it's not the same.
Well, that was what...I mean, and I'm not saying that I want to stop what's happening here, but I guess my question is, if we're doing it today, distillery-wise or brewery-wise, then tomorrow, we're going to be distillery-wise. So is there a way to...
The process?
I thought I'd say it too.
That is a different... I'm just asking. I mean, I'm looking to be educated here. All I know is stuff is made and people drink it.
Absolutely. I don't want to divulge any industry secrets, but I do know that distilleries use a lot of neutral grain spirits. So they're not necessarily doing their own mashing and producing their own sugar wash. They're basically buying distilled alcohols and then further distilling it and flavoring it later and paralyzing it on their own. So a lot of times...
Well, I wasn't looking for that. I was just curious about these housing tanks or whatever. Just wondering if the wording, as far as brewery, distillery, silo, housing tanks, whatever they are, would mean the same for both parties. That's all I was curious about.
Like buying a base for ice cream and putting in your own liquid.
Yeah. I can't sequence. I want to bring up 50, but I don't know.
Well, just using that as an example, not to put those guys out there on blast, but curious, because I mean, you guys make something. Apparently, they're going to make something.
Sure.
Is everybody going to be looking for a silo? That's all I wanted to know.
All right. So if there's anybody else from the public, we're going to be ready to close the public hearing. All right, no one else? Public hearing for Section 108-163. I remember it is closed, so any discussion by the council? If not, we are looking for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-08.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Mayor and a second by Councilmember Burrell to approve ordinance number 2022-08. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that ordinance 2022-08 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and I wish you all a wonderful holiday.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry holidays.
Mr. Gaskell?
Up next is Agenda Item Number Five, which is motion for approval, Motion 2022-21, the Berlin Fire and Berlin EMS budget text provision. Our town administrator, Mary Bowlin, is running point on this.
The language that is in motion before you is, as was requested by the Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Service. The only difference, I will say, is that the version that is in the packet has been corrected, the signed version. The fourth line, starting with the word budget, following Berlin Fire Company, will be added slash Emergency Medical Service. That's to provide the distinction between the two entities.
Wait. Where is that?
The fourth line of the top paragraph, following the words...
Over here.
Berlin Fire Company. We have added slash Emergency Medical Service.
So that's right? I was just wondering, right above it, it says Berlin Fire Company, then Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Service.
Well, the clarification was that the request was by both entities.
Gotcha.
The way that it read previously made it easier to write.
And I believe that language insertion came at the request. It's verbatim with Fire Company asked to be placed there.
I can't say that it's verbatim, but it was specifically requested.
They did request.
Yes.
So it makes it clear that's the two separate entities.
Correct.
That's what we're...
Correct.
And then each entity requested...
Yes.
Like this.
Yes. And then the language that follows, the actual meat of the motion, addresses the allocation of the funding as the total breakdown of the 525 allocated. Then the second two items reference the language as it was referred to in the public budget. The only caveat that we will make clear to the request by the Fire Company and Emergency Medical Service is we do have a character limitation when we enter it in Tyler. So we will do the best that we can to have it read exactly what they want, but I...They probably will not be able to get the full number of characters in there. That's the honor of the control.
We'll be as accommodating as we can within the software.
Exactly.
So this is a motion that we are seeking approval of this evening.
Motion to approve.
So a motion to approve by Councilmember Burrell.
Thank you.
Second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that Motion 2022-21 passes unanimously. We will follow this up with an email requesting the financials. That is something that we advise the Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS of when this was put on the agenda. So we'll follow that up.
So I know we...I know you nodded out, but I was just...Are we still working with D3 to get the webpage up?
The webpage with the breakdown of funding and the FAQs, yes. We're working on it.
If we could have followed on this topic, and we talked about it two weeks ago, but that, love to see the work group get back together. I mean, honestly, we'll say Jay and Jack served with that work group last, and I think if they were willing to continue serving in that capacity, I think that would be great. Just to get the conversation moving, I know once we flip the calendar, we're basically into budget, right? And I know the county has a task force meeting in mid-January. So just wanted to put that, please put that back up for us.
So what's probably going to occur, the Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS asked to have a meeting, but we wanted to resolve this issue. We want to have a sense of their financials so we can actually have a solid conversation. And from there, what we're probably going to determine is whether the next meeting, including everyone, should be a work session or an executive session, depending on the parameters. I think that's probably the best way for us to move forward at this time.
So that would be our next meeting, what, early January, right?
That's probably going to be the case. We're also, just so everybody's aware, on the budgeting side of things, we've been discussing internally, we would like to have any changes or adjustments to the contract by the end of January, and we want to have a contract done by the end of the month for FY '24.
From the Fire, Fire EMS.
That's the...
Excuse me. End of month for me in January?
End of the month as in January. So any changes?
Are they already?
No. We're discussing this now since we're on the topic, just so that you all are aware.
That pertains to language, not necessarily numbers.
Correct.
The numbers could be added at the end of the process.
Just to make sure we're all on a solid footing for FY '24. All right?
There. I had something. Just to clarify, and I guess maybe it gets carried away a little bit different, but just going out in the newspapers and to the citizens, the amounts that have been budgeted for fiscal '23 are unchanged. The distributions and the separation of the funds are requested per the contract by the Fire Company and EMS. Those funds already been distributed except the capital contributions. They're providing us with day boys for the additional staff that we provide the funded for that as well for 125 the fiscal year. So the language will be changed on the budget only. The audited financials does not contain that language. In our system, we do separate those entities by the federal ID numbers. They're separately stated, and the two checks are issued to the Fire Company and EMS separately. On the audited financial statements, as you've seen it today, that number gets grouped into the public safety together with the police department, and it will be no separation on the financial statements. The amounts remain the same on the budget. The language will change on the budget. The report is printed and republished on our website, but that's kind of up to the fact because we already provide them with the funds for this fiscal year.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think it's also important to note that you're going to have...The table that was created by the Finance Department is very transparent for the portion that will go out on the website, so I think anybody that's looking to learn more about the funding to both entities can certainly go there to find a solid resource for that. Thank you again.
I have one more question. That's not mine.
Go ahead.
So we're looking at second week in...Second week, second meeting of January. No, I'm sorry. You request, you're going to request of the Fire Company and EMS to have...
Just any suggested language change?
Because we can't talk a contract in the work session, is what I'm getting at.
Correct. That's separate and aside from the meetings that we just talked about. We'll determine, because there were a few lingering items, but without...And some of those were financial in nature. So it's only prudent to understand the financial position before we entertain those items. And we'll determine with our legal counsel and their legal counsel, what the best venue for that discussion would be. But I think that it's the best that we're all there together. So...
Yeah, no, I agree. I just wanted to clarify.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item Number Six, Town Administrator's Report.
I have a couple of things this evening on behalf of a couple of departments who were unable to join us. The Planning Department wanted me to mention that they have a meeting with representatives of 7 to 19 North Main Street later this week. The intent is for the exterior work to begin after the holidays, and that way, the building will just present a much nicer facade. But he'll have more information after he meets with them in person. The included in your packet, and you would have seen an email regarding the purchase of a system batch reactor for the Order Department. Unfortunately, they received this quote very late in the day of Friday, so we weren't able to get it into the packet. You have the information in front of me this evening for your approval. That is a total amount of $31,136.14. And Superintendent Megan Fowler has provided a staff report as well as some background information for your education. I will be quite honest with you and hope that you can glean everything that you can from what she has provided, because I'm quite sure that I cannot explain.
It's fun. And this is something we are seeing action this evening?
Yes, this is something they have been trying to get a quote and move forward with for several months, but as with everything else, material shortages, manufacturing delays, they were finally able to get the information.
And these dollars are coming from the increase in hauler fees?
Yes, yes.
I'm making a motion to approve the purchase.
Second. So we have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Horace for the expenditure of $31,136.14 to come from hauler fees for a sequence batch reactor. Is that what it is?
Sequence.
Yeah, sequence batch reactor.
System, system batch reactor.
System ba...
And a hose.
And a hose and a cartridge in the area.
And an actuator.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the purchase of $31,136.14 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Is the installation done in-house?
I believe so, yes.
Right.
I believe so. I can't swear by that, I can certainly find it. The other things that I had, a couple of quick things. The holiday luncheon is this Thursday, December 15th. Most town offices will close at noon for that. The lighting equipment for Henry Park has dropped off about a week ahead. It wasn't supposed to be in until this week, but they moved pretty quickly, and I'm sure Tim can follow up on that more when it gets to his report. We are moving forward with the salary study. Paypoint HR is actually scheduled to meet virtually with department heads on Wednesday morning. Following that, we will schedule times for them to meet with the employee, or if their intent is to, one way or the other, whether it's virtually or in person, meet with every employee of the town at some point. Kate has been working hard with Comcast and Telview to try to resolve the public access channel issue, and we have had it just...
What is the issue? What is the issue?
Nobody knows.
Oh, okay. Comcast doesn't know?
We've plugged things in, and we've tested things, and it's down at this point, I'm not going to, I'm not going to point fingers, but it's down at this point to one vendor saying that they think it's the other vendor's problem, and so...
Is it all on our side, or is it on Comcast's? Or is that the conflict?
It's in this building, as far as we know, I'll put it that way. But there are many different boxes plugged into different things, and we've replaced one part that didn't solve the issue, so we're still, we're still working on it.
It's technical.
Exactly, it's very technical. The only other thing that I have is that we did get word from State Highway this morning that they will be applying reflective paint tomorrow, but now in light of more conversation or things that Jimmy has looked at later today, I'm not entirely sure what that means. So, but they did move the striping, that was big, and it was quite amazing to see how much of a difference there was in where it was put down and where it belonged.
Can confirm it is perfect.
It's much better, yes, yes, much better.
Maybe we'll wait until Jimmy's report.
Yeah, Jimmy may have one.
The spacing of the travel lane is nice, but we all know how tight it can be downtown.
Yeah.
It was before.
Yeah, it's always going to be, as long as you allow parking, which of course we are going to allow parking, it's tight.
As long as you allow vehicles to go down the road, it will be.
Well, there's that too.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for our town administrator? All right, let's move on to departmental reports, starting with our electric utility director, Tim Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few things to report on. Over the past couple of weeks, we had our meter reading and demand reads. We assisted in the Berlin Christmas parade, which was a great success, there was a lot of people there. Streetlight repairs, tree trimming in Decatur extended, we replaced a secondary pedestal there. Various locations throughout town, we had to remove what's called anchor rods, and then we did pole top transformer maintenance. West Street, we assisted the waste order department with pulling a pump to clean it out, and then at the power plant, we had some maintenance work going on there. Tomorrow, we have a scheduled power outage here on Jefferson Street. About six homes will be out for about, probably an hour and a half at the most. That's to upgrade a transformer there, which all the customers have been notified. We went to each door, knocked on the door, and talked with the customers, so they're aware. And then also, over in Henry Park, the lighting material was actually delivered a week ahead of time. We were all, you know, prepared for it to come the week of the, this week, and it showed up last week. The truck driver called us and said, hey, I'm on the way. Like, okay, so we had to get prepared for that. Well, if you go by there, and I'm sure some of you have noticed, the poles are already up and the lights are up. Lights are LED, and they're actually focused downwards, so they don't spread so much light out towards the highway, or, you know, out towards the playground, it's more focused down straight on to the court itself. They're designed to be like that, so they don't push so much light outwards on it. The project is basically ahead of schedule right now, and it should be done by the first or second week in January.
So how tall are they?
Tall.
They are tall.
Okay.
There's two of them.
I'd say they're close to 60 feet tall.
And we have, I mean, look, don't get me wrong, I just have, so we have, if we have to change a bulb or whatever, we have the capability of doing that?
Not with our vehicles, we can't reach that high. We would have to actually probably get aerial crane to come in with a man lift basket and then take us up there. But just to give you an idea, I'm not sure what year we did the tennis court lights over at Decatur Park.
18 maybe?
How many years ago was that?
18 and 19, I think.
Yeah, they're kind of the same lights, and we have never had a bulb go out yet.
Oh, wow. All right. One time I mentioned rain, rain, so I don't want to...
Yeah.
But, but thanks, so about, okay, they look good.
But anyway, it's way ahead of schedule, and we should be done first, second week in January.
Two things I did want to just add to that, I want to thank Tim and Jimmy's departments for being very flexible and able to very quickly move when the truck driver said we're on our way. And Tim, could you explain how the lighting will work?
The way it, the light is going to move, the lighting kind of, it actually works the same way as Decatur Park tennis court lights. It's, they actually monitor it remotely by satellite. They can, if a bulb goes out, they'll actually contact me and tell me which pole was out and which light it is on, or if anything goes...
They also aim it when they first install it correctly by satellite?
That's correct. It'll, well, it's pretty sophisticated.
It is.
They actually do, they'll give me an app to where I can actually look on it on the app, I can see, you know, which lights are facing which direction. It's pretty sophisticated.
Is there, I think Decatur has a timer, doesn't it?
Yes, that's something I wanted to talk to you about, I didn't know. What time are you wanting these lights to shut down? Because that's, that is something we have to figure out.
What's the language for...
We will have to put an amendment to the ordinance. Currently, the ordinance addresses the hours for the tennis courts, it does not address the basketball courts.
I'm making a beard.
So we will need to do that.
What are those?
It was pretty late.
I believe it's 11:00 PM on the tennis courts. It may be 10:00. They've been, it's been 11:00 PM for ever.
Now, usage wise, usage wise, can you tell if it's being used that late into the evening?
Oh, yeah.
On the app?
Yes.
So can you let us know what that usage typically stops at?
Yeah, one thing I would keep in mind is those basketball courts are right next to a housing project versus the park is, there's not many houses in there. So I don't know if you want them on at 11 o'clock at night.
No, when we, when we did the survey of the neighborhood, when we first started on this project, the time that was suggested was 10:00 PM. That was the majority of people who had a time said 10:00 PM, so.
Now...
Wait, when we first started this project, we're talking about originally, like in 1997?
Well, not that far.
It's only been a couple of years.
Yeah, it's, the lighting project has been out there a few years. Yes.
Now, are you looking for a general time by this group so that it can come up in January, or what are we looking to do? Because the project's going to be online soon.
Yes, yes, you'll, you'll want the ordinance in place before the lights are on, so that people can actually get out there, yes, yes. So the intent is to have an ordinance to you for the first meeting in January with a public hearing, the second meeting in January. I mean, my suggestion would be 10:00 PM. Arnold may have a thought on that.
I would say less, and don't forget the bathrooms should correspond with the lights.
Yeah, that is...
You would say, you think 10:00 is good?
No, I do not.
I don't either, I think 10:00 is way too late.
Do we have to folks identify by property that respond to this?
No, when we had the survey done, it was, it was just, it was now sort of too occupant in the, in the area.
You would only really have Isaiah Fassa or Berlin, Berlin Warren to be concerned with. Across the street, you have Ms. Ayers, and then you have...
Mr. Booty?
Mr. Booty.
Mm-hmm. And then the Burrells are rebuilding their house, I doubt very seriously, next door, they're going to want people at the park at 10 o'clock at night.
If you set the time for 9:00 PM, that would only really mean that they would be in use a few months out of the year, because in the summertime, it's light almost until dawn. And in the coldest weather, you're not going to have as many...
But can the ordinance say something like that during the winter months, it can operate from light to blank, and then if the time changes, if it gets darker later, add an hour? You know what I'm saying?
Well, I would suggest, because it's a lighting issue, just setting a single time year round, yeah. But that's something, give it some thought, and when we go to talk about the ordinance, we can certainly talk about it more. We can also talk about it to the Parks Commission.
Will it be posted at the park? Then we will have a public hearing?
We can, we certainly can.
I think it would be a smart thing, and it may be advantageous to also send something out to the property owners that are directly impacted.
We can do that.
Is there, now, before we get in the level of drafting, does this group feel passionately about any particular time?
I feel very passionately that 10 o'clock is too late.
Okay, so throw a number out there.
I mean, 9 o'clock sounds feasible to me, but I don't live right there. I mean, I'm not playing that.
But we have to draft something.
Unless you use 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock. 9 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
When does the Parks Commission meet?
January 10th. No, 10th, thank you.
January 10th.
January 10th.
Can we just, can we also run this past them?
Sure, of course.
Mary noted...
That'll be the day after, we got it. We're the 9th, they're the 10th.
That's true, that's true, because the, the meeting would have been held the day after we came back from the holiday, so it was just a bit much schedule-wise, so their meeting would be... But you can, you can change that language if you want to, here, and that's, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Tim, in your report? Okay, any questions for our electric utility director? All right, thank you. Up next is our chief of police, Miles Allen.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to echo what has already been said, that Christmas parade was wonderful, and I would add that tree lighting also. And I think credit should definitely go out to Ivy and Allison for coordinating everything. They did a wonderful job as usual. I'd like to also thank Pocahontas City, Ocean City, Worcester County Park Police, and the Worcester County Sheriff's Office for actually helping us on Christmas, couldn't do it without them. Had several meetings over the last couple of weeks. One including a retreat of board directors in Berlin with MML. With that panel, we discussed the police accountability on boards, and I don't think I'm going to be invited to any more legislative dinners anytime soon. The other panels were Senator Will Smith is the chairman of judicial proceedings, and we also had Luke Kleppinger, who is actually the House Judiciary Chair. So one, one statement that was made, and I make it to you also, right now, the MML's coming back and saying they would like to have a voice in actually the boards themselves, and my statement was that because you did not make a statement when it was put out there, the senators and legislation actually either felt one of two things, either we were ignorant to the facts, or you didn't care. So I would say to you guys, whenever we have a highway user fees come up, whenever we have any legislation that's going to impact us, when we're actually talking about anything that has a fiscal impact, we have to go ahead and voice our opinions. The big discussion was, should municipalities have their own boards? I went over the pros and cons, and again, what they're pushing for is the option. We're a little bit different in Worcester County than PG County, if you didn't know that already. They have quite a few more municipalities, and they don't have a single voice. We don't always have a single voice either, but they're in the total opposite directions. So they feel that they should be able to have their own boards and their own commissions and the right to do that. So again, it's problematic because they didn't discuss this before the legislation was put out there. They didn't say anything before. So that is the only position that the MML has this season, nothing else. So again, it's something that probably should have been voiced a little bit earlier. Also, Lieutenant Lawson did the First Amendment audit, and I believe that Kelsey's going to speak to that. And we did finish the background checks for the two candidates that have been offered employment. They both have actually stated that they would love to be a part of the town of Berlin, and we're working out those details. That's my report.
Yes, so two things. What the chief is saying about the Maryland Municipal League's legislative priority is correct. There is only one legislative priority this session, and is developing local accountability for what should have been in the original legislation. But I will disagree with you on one point. I spoke with Ms. Teresa, who's now the new executive director of MML, and she said, you have a phenomenal police chief, and you should be happy to have him. So I think they'd be happy to have you back anytime. I don't, I don't think you burned any bridges there.
I think Teresa would love to have you back, but I don't think the senator's going to let you go.
I can't speak for the other representatives, but I will say that Teresa had very favorable things to say.
I truly appreciate that.
Chief?
Yes.
When you onboard these two new officers, how many spaces will you then have at any?
We'll actually have one, and we're still applying. We have one person that's actually still out on medical leave, and hearings will be coming up, and in the next few months, hopefully, we'll have an understanding of what direction that might be. So officially, we have one more. It's possible there's going to be two more.
I think you guys had authorized to hire for two, but until that point, you know, right now, there's true, one true vacancy, but you guys had authorized that additional position.
And now to the applicants, the, the ones that were successful, we have extended offers of employment too.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not excluding that number for any set reason, we just had two qualified candidates that we wanted to move forward. So any other questions for the chief of police?
Yes, I have one that was asked to ask. Are either of your new possibilities bilingual?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, did you hear that, Horace? He said yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. They both were really great, I thought, looking forward to them joining Berlin.
And again, it's always valued when we have Kelsey's opinion on the boards, and she does a great job. I have nothing to do with those things. I have nothing to do with that, the backgrounds themselves. After everything's done, they sit in my office, they get to look in her eyes, tell them why they should be a part of our agency, and I really push that, and then let them know that it's going to be a family if they're a part of the agency itself. So my job is really easy when they do their jobs.
Isn't that for all of us? Our jobs are really easy whenever I do the job. Anything else for the chief of police? All right. Town Attorney David Gasco, anything to report?
Yes, sir.
All right, good day. Up next is our finance director, Natalie Slick.
Good evening. So the audit is finished, and we wait for the end, and we're going to close the year permanently, and guess what, we go into the budget. We have discussed internally the budget, internal schedule, and we're still working on it. Once it gets through the final details, we'll be presenting the budget schedule for you for fiscal '24. We work in on the electric rate study with, with an associate, it's a lot of going into it, it's a lot of writing and reading and researching. December the 19th, we're going to be in Baltimore for the annual ACA hearing. December the 19th, we're going to be in Baltimore for the annual ACA hearing. It's a reconciliation of the monthly rates for the past 12 months. Mary, myself, and Mayor Zach will be attending, as well as Steve from Bothin Associates and our legal counselor, Bob Dillows. Internally, we're working on our regular routine, things, debt payments, bank reconciliation, working on financial highlights will be presented. I think it's first January 9th, first meeting in January. We'll go to fiscal '23. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Can you say that the audit's behind us one more time?
Well, it seems like you just got going through that and waiting for the end to take a breathe out, and then we jump into the budget, so.
A lot of people.
And once we finish the budget, we're going into the audit.
A lot of people see the presentation, but they don't understand the backend work that your department does, so thank you for that again.
Thank you.
Any questions for our Finance Director? All right, up next is our Public Works Director Jimmy Charles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. No hat? You're not going to wear it?
I got it.
All right. You've got to put it on for the.
Looking professional.
It's the holidays.
Charlie says that he wants to send his helpers.
Yeah. So, again, the parade was a very success, and how it works was able to come in, help set up, tear down, and move on. Sentations have been working hard the last couple, and we've had little issues with the guys with trash cans or anything, even callbacks. But with the holidays coming up, I just wanted to make a reminder that next Friday's trash will be done on Thursday, the 22nd, and then on Monday's recycling, or Friday's recycling will be done on Thursday, Monday's recycling will be done following Tuesday, on the 27th. That's the same for New Year's, too. Yard pickup was last week, on the 7th, and we have yard pickup this week, 1st to 14th. And one of our employees, Adam Paul, has passed his pesticide, Maryland pesticide and safety certification course.
Good job.
Which is a big thing for the town to have qualified technicians on vegetation control, so.
Vegetation control.
Yeah, we only have one employee currently in the electric department that holds that license, so now we have two, so.
And line painting went on today, and I'll make sure of them out there tomorrow and just monitor more of the job that is being done.
Throw a little confetti in there, a little glitter.
Now, I will say that the lines looked narrow for parking on the way through, but when I was coming up this evening for the meeting, there were some smaller vehicles that were within, like, the curb and the painted line, so.
It worked before, it'll work again.
Yeah.
I think, I'm not sure we had the line where the, to the left of the parking, but I think at this time, like you said, it worked before, and we'll see. I think the yellow line, moving that back to where it originally was placed, I think it was 12 foot off the southbound lane, that would keep the northbound lane free.
Now, the SHA is not doing the painting and the reflective coating, correct?
It's a subcontract, right?
Contract.
So can you find out, I think, to your point, Stephen Decatur.
Yeah.
Hi, no.
Robin.
Yeah. Seahawk, thank you. Maybe, it may be beneficial to apply that type of painting with the reflective nature there. Could we get them to quote that while they're in town?
We have worked the last couple of months, and we now have a contract, we're in the process of having a contract with State Highway to come in and paint our streets. I think we're finalizing that with them.
Maybe we just got the final copy.
Right, and I'm hoping within the next month or so, and then, I'm not sure in conditions that they can apply that painting, but we will actually reline all Seahawk.
Thank you, thank you for that.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All Seahawk in town.
What's that?
In town, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah. Don't go any further.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for our Public Works Director Jimmy Charles? Thank you, Tom, congratulations. All right, up next is our Human Resources Director Kelsey Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Arnold mentioned, two offers were accepted from the police department. We did make an offer for the spray site operator, and then we have four interviews scheduled on Wednesday for electric line worker apprentice, and we are receiving several applications to consider for the mayor's assistant and PIO position, so I don't know if things are picking back up there a little bit, so that's good. And then as Mary stated, we are moving forward with the PayPoint HR Wage and Compensation and Classification Study. We've been gathering some information that they need to move forward. Kate's been a great help with that. She's been gathering the information that they need, pulling it from the job descriptions, so thank you for that. That's been very helpful. We ran the one-time payments today. Those will go out to staff on Friday, so again, thank you all for doing that. Met with Tim to go over those positions that he has available, as well as meeting with Tim, Mary, and the mayor to go over succession planning for the electric department. So we do have some individuals that have already announced retirement, and then we have some others that, you know, are talking about it, so just trying to figure out what the best steps are moving forward, so. And as Arnold mentioned, we worked with Lieutenant Lawson to set up First Amendment Audit Training in Town Hall on December 7th. He did a really nice job, so thank you for that. We went to the quarterly Maryland Municipal Clerks Association meeting on Thursday last week, where about 25 municipalities were present, and six of them said that they've already had, they've been hit with the First Amendment auditors coming to their municipalities. So it's definitely something that's picking up. A lot of those groups were smaller municipalities, so it's, I don't know if they're picking on the little guys or something, but I think we probably fall in that smaller category, so it's definitely something that I think we got ahead of with that training, so. And also at the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association meeting, the group voted to award me a scholarship to attend the Region Two Conference in January that's going to be held in Frederick. Region Two is made up of Maryland, Virginia, DC, Delaware, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and West Virginia, so I was awarded a scholarship to attend that meeting.
Congratulations.
And.
That's a lot, it's close, like you don't have to.
Yeah, it's about a plus. Yeah, they switched states every year, so this year it's Maryland. But, yeah, we had originally budgeted for me to attend, but when Kate had started, I felt that that would be a more appropriate thing for her to attend and learn, so we were letting her go, but I said, "Well, try this out," and it worked. So now we'll both be attending, so. But yeah, other than that, I don't have anything. Look forward to the holidays, so that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for our Human Resources Director?
So, if I counted right, probably did not. Townwide high-tech, there are like five or six vacant positions?
Well, yeah, we have technically two police officers, well, four, once, you know, two have offered positions, then we have, we're always looking for police communications officers. We have a spray site, a distribution and collection tech, the lineman apprentice, the mayor's PIO position. I don't know, let's keep it count over there, but, and then I feel like there's one more that I'm, distribution and collection technician? Did I say that? Okay, well, the spray site, because he has not technically accepted at this point, so yeah, about six or so, and then the police positions.
And we're trending in the right direction.
We are, finally.
And how many announcements of retirement do you have?
One, and the electric department is retiring at the end of this month. He did not want it really to be a thing, so I feel better not saying his name, you know, but he just wanted to just kind of execute quietly, and then we've had a few others that have also mentioned it in the electric department and said that they're just, they're ready. Actually, one of them tells me every weekend, "You know, I'm going to call you Monday and say, 'Come get my town cars.'" So I don't know, I'm waiting for that, but, so, I don't know. We've got probably two or three in the near future, but not just electric, just in general.
But it says a lot for, I mean, the meeting that we had, you're being very proactive. We're going to talk about electric for a moment, but you're being very proactive in the structuring of your department.
Yep.
The positioning of your department for the changes that may come, whenever people are ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been planning on this for the past three or four years, you know, succession planning, because I knew people were coming to the point where they're going to be retiring, so we, it takes a two- or three-year process just to get people to know how to do their duties, and so it's been in the works.
But we've got a good group of employees across all departments, but just, and to Mary's point, you were just talking side conversation with Shanika, like, we have an aging workforce, so it is natural to see these, which we want people to do at some point, whenever they feel right.
But it's so hard to say goodbye.
It is hard to say goodbye.
I'm not going to say their names. Dot, dot, dot.
But with that, the institutional knowledge, we lose some of that, but our department heads are doing a good job of shadowing employees and shifting people into different positions, so.
And that's why retention's so important as well, because, you know, with people that are getting to a point where they can retire, we definitely want to retain the people here that, you know, have been learning the jobs and getting the trades down, and it just, you know, it's very important, because if they go and we have people retire, we're going to be not in a good place.
Well, thank you all for your work. Anything else for Human Resources before we go to our, I know you're saying you're good, but I'm supposed to say any, anything from our Administrative Assistant Kate Dobbs?
Certainly, thank you.
Nothing to report for Thursday?
We still need dishes. We still need food.
Food, supplies, soda, juice.
Just send an email out.
One more email.
Well, I mean, it's good. It's getting the people, it's a good thing, so.
She attended her first clerk's meeting last week. We were looking about the First Amendment, the benefits, the points. They are talking about how they have, for the conference, the Region Two conference that we're going to, they are anticipating one of the bigger turnouts that they've had, so they are prepared to have some trainings for us that will be useful, so.
All right. Good job. Any questions for Kate? All right, that concludes our departmental reports. We'll move on to comments from the council, starting with our Vice President Dean Burrow.
All I have is season wishes. I'm very pleased to be a member of this council with such a fine group of employees. First, let me say, Natalie, thank you for your leadership and that clean audit. That is a very good thing, and each of you, for the work you do, it is greatly appreciated. And I know not only by us sitting up here, but by the citizens of the town of Berlin. We wish you the best for these holidays, and our hope going forward is that you remain, you remain motivated, loyal, and above all, skilled in your individual positions, not only for the leadership of the department heads, but for the staff also. You make our jobs so easy by providing us with the information we need and with your relationships with the public. So, thank you all, and I trust that each of you will have the best of holidays.
Thank you, sir.
You too.
You too.
Up next, Councilmember Nair.
So I'll just say, well.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilmember Horace, would you like to go first?
I didn't want to follow that.
I thought you said you wanted to go next.
No, no, no.
Councilmember Nair.
We won't see one another till next year, so I just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year, and I want to say to you, Santa Charles over there, that's a very good look for you.
He's making an audio list of those.
Get a hello.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
Natalie, you're trying to say I'm on that list.
That's Santa Claus right here. I'm not. I do see some scratch out. We're always careful of our evidence.
So looking over 2022, we've had, I mean, a lot of ups and downs throughout the country, but right here in our own little nook and cranny, our own little haven, I feel that 2022 was a really good year for the town of Berlin, not just as a municipality, but as a working group. You all have done a phenomenal job with maintaining the status of this town and keeping us, and I'm not being cliche, but keeping us one of those towns on the shore that's most highly sought after. Everybody wants to be in Berlin at one time or another during the year. We see that at the Christmas parade, we see that at Halloween, we'll see that next week at the ball drop. You guys do a great job, well, whatever day it is, really, but you all do a great job as a workforce, keeping this town appealing. Everybody is, and I'm not saying, I'm not blowing smoke up, everybody loves Berlin, and it's because of what you all do. And Jimmy Charles. Jimmy Charles. The last thing I wanted to ask you, because this thing doesn't work, because the public access channel doesn't work. Is there a Christmas tree drop-off happening?
Yes.
Because I can't.
There's a curb sign.
Sometime in January.
The two Wednesdays, the first two Wednesdays of January.
So don't call us about your Christmas tree before January, please.
It's not a drop-off, it's a curb sign.
Drop off at your curb.
For real Christmas trees.
For real, for real Christmas trees. Real Christmas trees. We're not taking your.
Up next, Councilmember Horace.
I'm just going to echo real quick what my colleagues have already said up here, and I want to thank you all, and I want to wish everyone, from colleagues to department heads to staff to citizens, friends, family, I say Merry Christmas, but whatever occasion you celebrate this holiday season, enjoy, be safe, be healthy, and let's bring on '23 in a good way.
Safely.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
I have nothing to add. Everybody said it great. Thanks, everyone.
I conclude.
Steve, when you're bringing up the name.
Natalie put you on the top.
That's a gift.
We'll move on to comments from the mayor. So I just want to say and echo what's been said by our department heads, the town of Berlin's Christmas parade was excellent. It's a huge lift on our staff and the volunteers that come out to help out, but first and foremost, pretty much everybody in this room, I think everybody in this room was here in some form or fashion, helping out with that parade, so it was a success. I want to thank my colleagues on the council for helping lead the parade. It was a fun event. I'm glad we started that. Steve, great job with the decorations you unpacked and getting the boat together, so a huge thank you for that.
Just went back yesterday.
Okay, well, to be continued, right? Well, we set the bar high, so we'll figure out what 2023 brings. But along that line, I also want to echo Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. This is the last time we'll see each other in this setting until 2023, so enjoy the holidays. I look forward to seeing everybody at the holiday party.
All right, up next, our comments from the public. Do we have any this evening? All of you are on the nice list. Comments from the press, Natalie's nice list, I shall say. All right, up next, Vice President Burrow.
To Jared.
All in favor? No, second needed.